Commissioner Haynes?
Here.
Commissioner Sauer?
Here.
Commissioner Roach?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Mayor May?
Here. We do have a question present. First, I would be citizen comments. This is a comment any citizens may bring up to choose on or off the agenda. We limit that time for five minutes. And if you don't mind, just state your name and what you'd like to speak on, and we'd be happy to listen. Thank you, everyone.
My name is Howard Bowman. I'm the Director of Missions of the Franklin Baptist Association. This is Ira Linville. He's our moderator. In October, the Franklin Baptist Association celebrated its 200th anniversary. And a part of that celebration is several resolutions that were passed. And one of those resolutions had to do with Reverend Wallace Kent. Brother Kent had served this community for over 38 years. He was pastor at Christwood, and he was also serving out at Buck Run. And I was passing out the resolution. I'm not going to take time to read all of that, just some of the words about him. The last part is what the resolution is about, and we're asking the Commission to consider, and I'll talk about this, renaming East Main Street from Spaghetti Junction to Silver Lake Two as Reverend Wallace Kent Boulevard. And that appropriate signage be placed on that thoroughfare to officially memorialize that street designation. And Ira and I talked, and we realized that that word renaming is not necessarily, you know, we realize you're not going to change it, East Main, to that, but at least if that could be signage recognizing his service to this community, we would be very, very grateful for that. He was a very dear friend of mine. I'd known him for years, and as I said, he served this community. He was everyone's pastor. It didn't matter who you were, who you loved. So that's the request from the Association, and we hope that you'll take it under consideration. If you have any questions or directions for me, please.
That's great. Thank you. I know we would, that's a state road, so we'd have to give permission, anything that we do on there, we'd just have to run that through Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, so we'll get our folks to look at, to see what procedures are needed. The legislature does that all the time.
Right.
On highways and roads in Kentucky, so I'm sure that whatever the procedures would be, we can, we'll find out quickly, I guess. We'll let City Manager, we'll staff and get moving on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Commission? Can we thank you all for bringing us here? It's good to actually have you all with us.
Thank you. Appreciate you very much.
Okay. Anybody else have any citizen comments?
I have a...
Go ahead.
I got a question on behalf of a citizen. I want you to go on behalf of a citizen who, City Mayor, come down on the scene here. Mr. City Manager, is that Virginia Avenue down that parallels the Wilkinson Street that they were looking at, the walkway where there's the nasty ditch that's kind of like a danger? Do we know anything about, if we're doing anything with that, or?
I have not. Let me ask Public Works Director.
We have not fixed that yet.
Is it like something that we're still considering, or?
I'm looking at options.
Okay.
One or two different options of how to fix it.
You know what I'm talking about? Okay. Okay.
It's still on the radar.
It's still on the radar? Thank you. I'll tell them. Thanks.
All right. Next discussion, we had the request from Walk Bike about the Mayor's Challenge. I signed up for that last week after somebody had sent me an email. I don't remember, I don't know. I don't know if it's you or somebody. I just went on the page and just clicked it and did that, which doesn't obligate anybody on that. This is, I listed as contact. I put down Jim Parish, Parks Director. Since Parks has kind of been dealing with that, it could go beyond. It was just a thing for them, just a contact. That's all it is. It don't obligate you to anything. But if Ms. Heckers wanted to talk, just say anything about that, I figured the Commission wouldn't care that.
Just very briefly, yeah. Just have, I do have a, thanks to the Franklin Police Department for providing this information about bicycle and pedestrian involvement in crashes in Franklin County. It's a period from the first of 2013 through the first of March of 2010. Oh, I'm sorry, should make some more copies.
Got your issue.
You guys.
Thank you.
At any rate, 41 incidents, 31 of which resulted in injuries and one fatality, which, if my math is right, is about a 78% injury rate. I don't know what the injury rate for motorists involved in traffic incidences, but I'm guessing it probably doesn't come close to 78%. So, thank you, City Attorney Rob Moore, for cleaning up the resolution, which, and we're fine, because I just wanted to say that Walk Bike Frankfurt is totally committed to partnering with the city for that. The three things that we do ask of the city in accepting the Mayor's Challenge are the criteria put forth by the challenge. One is to issue a public proclamation, just affirming the city's commitment to improving safety for people who walk and ride bicycles. The second is to assemble a task force to look for ways to make that happen. And the third is to develop and implement a complete streets policy. In Kentucky, Lexington, Louisville, and Berea have complete streets policies, and one of the advantages of having one is that when projects are underway by the Transportation Cabinet or within the city, that if we had that policy in place, it gives us a perspective to consider the people who use the street in addition to those who are driving cars. You know, for instance, with Wilkinson Boulevard, I know there's a proposal in the works to develop a skate park, you know, Gaddy Town location. Well, with a complete streets policy, we would look at that and say, this is great, but do we really want to encourage children to cross the street to get to a skate park when there's no real safe pedestrian facility for them to do so? So, we just look forward to working with you all day, and appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
Questions about the challenge or what? No, zero financial impact, Commissioner Roach.
You know me. I've already asked that question. My second question, just to make sure I got it, which is, there's no commitment from us whatsoever. In other words, there's no commitment that says we have to do complete streets or anything. It's just study.
The commitment, I would say, is one of political will. The only expenditure would be expending the political will to study the problem, to, yes, commit to finding resources and solutions to improve safety for road users, whether they be motorists, wheelchair users, pedestrians, bicycle riders, other people who might, you know, use public transportation, et cetera.
The study group can make recommendations, but transportation doesn't have to follow them.
No, but if those recommendations are in place, and if we have a complete streets policy in place, it does put us in much better stead to take advantage of transportation alternative grants, other types of grants, like the one we received from the Green America Capital, just really puts us in a better position, because we have a plan in place. And if we had that plan in place, KYTC is given that much more incentive to honor the conditions, the application conditions of that plan.
Let me give back to Commissioner Roach. He had a little more.
You through, Commissioner Sauer?
Yeah.
So, okay, so what do we need to do?
Issue a public proclamation, assemble a task force, and we would also ask that the third part of that be to adopt a complete streets policy.
Why don't we go ahead, Mayor? I know you've already done this, but, you know, just put it on the agenda to formally accept it.
If you do use the resolution that I drafted, or I took Ms. Heckers and tweaked it, I did point out that Mayor William I May has previously accepted the Mayor's Challenge for Safer People, Safer Streets, and then the Commission would just be requesting the Mayor to formally accept the Mayor's Challenge. So, if that's the way you want to go, but what this was indicating.
I'd like to go that way.
Does the, on completing a complete streets policy, does the Parks Department know exactly what that entails?
Yeah. This just came out in February?
The Mayor's Challenge just came out. The Complete Streets Program is something that's been around for a while, and until very recently, it wasn't really heavily untalented by the U.S. Department of Transportation, but they have begun to become much more vocal and forceful in encouraging communities to do so. Basically, the elements of the Complete Streets Policy are, A, acknowledging that there are multiple users of transportation systems within a community, and that you want to make it possible for as many of those users to safely reach their destinations as possible, regardless of their mode of prevalence. And then to take that information and that guiding principle and apply it to roadway improvements.
Yeah. I'm for the study part, but I'd like somebody to research this Complete Streets Policy, because there may be parts of that that are really good, but there may be some parts of that that aren't so good. I'd want to look at that further before I would endorse that.
And I'm sure our Public Works Department will need to be involved in that.
Because this reads that we're adopting a Complete Streets Policy to apply to all transportation-related projects. And my guess is, besides what Donna just told us, none of us know what that is. I don't.
Well, I know they look at National Highway Traffic Safety Administration guidelines and looking at bikeways and pedways when new projects are constructed. It's got widths involved, dimensions.
There's a variety of factors. It might include features such as, I don't know exactly what they're called, nothing highway engineer, but when new medians are built, for instance, there are often islands that are put in those medians. They're called refuges, I think.
Right.
So that pedestrians crossing a multi-lane roadway have a safe, safer place to stop before continuing the crossing. That is one feature of a Complete Streets Policy or guideline. Other ones might be crosswalk signals that are, have longer times.
Well, I guess I would ask, if it's all right with the Commission, if we had that language to where we would study that, rather, because the way that reads, I can't tell if you're studying it or you're adopting it, because the first part of that sentence talks about studying issues and proposed solutions, and then the rest of the sentence has, and adopting a Complete Streets Policy to apply. I'd prefer we study that rather than say we're adopting it.
Consider adoption.
Or consider.
Yeah. Just make, change it to consider adoption.
What, I don't know what everybody else thinks of.
That's fine.
Is there a time?
Well, this challenge is going to be, it's for 2013, when, yeah, from the time you accept.
Don't we have time for Public Works to get back and give us their opinion?
Sure. Yeah, there's no deadline. It was just something that Secretary Fox came out. He was the mayor, by the way.
That's a good question, Mayor. As I understand it, Donna, you're asking them to appoint the task force to do this very thing.
Right.
Am I confused about that?
No, that's correct, Senator.
But Commissioner Roach, you're saying you would rather the Public Works do that.
No, I have no problem with the task force, but if you read the last sentence, it sounds like it's a fait accompli, and that is that you've already adopted it. It doesn't have the word "study" on the second part of that sentence.
That's right.
I see. Okay.
So I'm fine with studying. I'm fine with the task force doing it. I just don't want to lock myself into something before I know a whole lot more about it.
No sense.
And I apologize. I wasn't supposed to, I guess I'm so used to Sally being a former, I just realized, oh, yeah, I just called on a body.
That's all right.
I got rules like that.
That's okay, Mayor.
That was a serious question, Mayor.
With the rules I have, I'm not allowed to do it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And I was, I just said, okay, yeah. Oh, yeah. Flashback to 2002.
You do it.
No, no, it's my fault.
Was it that long ago? Sorry?
It's long.
It seems like yesterday.
Sorry. Anyway, so that's what we'll do then. We're not adopting anything today. This was just a discussion item. And any tweaks that need to be made, if there's, Commissioners need to ask the city solicitor, who's going to draft that, questions, he can draft that, and I'm sure our Public Works Director and Parks Director will give us input on that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all for being here.
Let's say this Trail Town, Ed Castle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hand out my...
Thank you.
My proposals. Thanks, Senator. What I passed out is a brief synopsis of what a case for making a portage path around Lot Four on the Kentucky River is all about. So that's our topic. It's important, because the Kentucky River, after all, is the capital city's river, and it's our namesake. And I think we ought to have a way to get around it with people who either can't time their arrival at the lot when the Kentucky River Authority is opening them on weekends, or might be frightened by what's going on inside the lot when they're in there in small boats. Why me? Well, I'll just keep it as short as I can. I'm fairly well qualified to talk about this subject. We've got three goals. Actually, under the radar, when these locks were closed almost 10 years ago, Frankfurt became a landlot from the rest of the world for the first time in its history. That's kind of scary. Fortunately, this year is the year where that problem will be resolved with the opening of Locks One through Four. So, there again, there's emphasis on traffic at Lot Four, and we'd like to see an option to locking through for boats that are much smaller than ones that are motorized. We're also looking for a lot more boater traffic to enhance our local economy as an attraction. We are nowhere near the numbers that we displayed, probably within the last three decades anyway, and there's no reason to argue that that cannot be reclaimed. And speaking of the demand, I was the chairman of our trade association, and by the way, something more scarier than being landlocked is that there are about 3,500 of people like me who used to rent, in my case, canoes, tacks, and whitewater rams, and now stand-up paddleboards across this nation. I got a letter from the Coast Guard and the Army Corps of Engineers to chair a panel at their annual conference on paddle sports safety. Oh, my God. We're mostly Ma and Pa sort of entities, at least when we started back in the mid-'80s, most of us, and I couldn't help but be curious of why the Coast Guard is interested in all the things that they have to do to talk about paddle sports safety. Well, not wanting to be classified as another hick from that hick state of Kentucky, I did my homework. The year 2000, the year before, I went to the conference. 50 million Americans recreated on America's waterways in motorized watercraft. Anybody want to hazard a guess on how many people recreate on America's waterways in non-motorized craft? Just a guess from anybody who's got guts.
Over 100,000.
Oh, come on, Tommy.
Half a million.
Half a million. Look at that. That's a pretty widespread. You are the lowest one I've ever had answer that question yet. The chairman of the board of the Kentucky River Authority guessed 3 million. Tommy said 100. We reached parity that day in 2001, when I was at that conference, that year before. I didn't know that. So I would have guessed probably closer to you than what Tommy gave. Since then, we've gone through a pretty well-acknowledged depression, and you can imagine that motorized boat sales is probably flattened, if not declining. Does anybody want to guess what it is in 2010?
For the motorized?
60,000.
How many?
60.
60,000? Actually, motorized boats are about, struggling to be somewhere around 60 million. Paddle sports.
We've gone up.
It's 120 million people recreated in 2010 on America's waterways in non-motorized paddlecraft. So, having these four locks open that's coming here, yeah, I'd say that's a pretty good bet that we're going to see a lot more traffic than we've ever seen in the past. And the third goal is to reclaim the Kentucky as a river. Right now, it's a series of 15 narrow, windy pools, about 20, 22 miles long, and I don't know about you, but that would bore the heck out of me if I were locked in one of them for the rest of my life. I don't care how slow I could paddle, it would still be somewhat boring. So that's going to happen. We're going to end up with a 256-mile water trail, and we might as well brace ourselves for that, and we may as well acknowledge our responsibility to make sure that the infrastructure is there for all the visitors we hope to get to come to see us. So now for the plan itself. This is part of our Trail Town application. In infrastructure like this, and through improvements relative to infrastructure that we already have on this river, which we've done, fortunately, we can. Yes, could the Corps of Engineers have done a lot better job perhaps in maintaining those structures, many of which are 100 years old, well, over 100 years old? Yes. Could they have done a better job dredging the river? Yes. We are where we are, and the river is going to be open if our example of having the lock portage sprays like I think it's going to spray, more than Poison Ivy among the other 13 locks up the river. But even then, the advantage to us is that we will once, we will for once have an 82-mile stretch of Kentucky River from Carrollton to Clint, is it Clinton? Clinton. Hmm? I'm kind of close. Clifton, in Woodford County, instead of 22 miles to go. So, when I first moved here and formed a scout troop out in Peekskill, after two years, I got my scouts to take on something challenging called the Appalachian Trail. We mapped out six days of hiking, 86 miles, most of which is up and down. Magnificent experience for these boys, there's no doubt about it. Magnificent experience for this man as well. We parked in Damascus, Virginia, a pioneer among Trail Towns. We spent the night in an old house, looks very similar to the lot houses down here at the Lot Four property. We spent 25 cents a night per person to have a hot shower or a warm bath, to have access to a washing machine and a dryer. I mean, who knows, we just drove from Frankfurt out there to Damascus, Virginia in one day. We could have hiked from Baltimore or somewhere near Friendship, Maryland, there over several days, and even though we might have found a lucky person, found a spot that had enough water in to bathe, our clothes would still give us away, okay? So to have those kinds of facilities is the kinds of infrastructure you need to show people who've come to visit us, that, yes, we take your presence seriously, and we want to make sure that you have all the amenities you need. So the first drawing in there shows the kinds of facilities that we want to have at this Lot Four portage eventually. Right now, I am hoping I can raise the money to get it built for our grand opening on June 26th. As a part of opening all the other three locks and facilities between here and the Ohio River, I'd like to have ours be something special, and that we have at least a workable pathway around Lot Four on the same day. And it also shows the other amenities that I would like to see there, including a small campground, among others, and I have some sketches of what the steps and the pathway would look like, and I'm seeking estimates for having to get this built now. So, I am working on it every day. And I also was, wanted you to see that I'm asking you to adopt a supporting resolution for this facility. And no, Commissioner Roach, I'm not asking for any money. I didn't even ask for money from the Kentucky River Authority.
Boy, you got a recommendation.
I didn't ask money from the Kentucky River Authority, and I'm not asking it of you for the same reason. You guys got a lot on your plate. And by George, if we can't raise that money locally, then I'm in the wrong business. I had on December 3rd, an email that said, in response to a note that I sent to my board directors at Kids Row Kentucky, that we're going out on a limb, and I'm doing one of my family's worst nightmares. I'm ready, shoot, aiming, and I spent the $700 it took to produce the drawings to date and get this plan in graphic form for everybody to understand. The next day, the Kentucky River Authority approved this plan, the same resolution I'm asking you all to pass. The next day, I got a check for $700. That's how fast that worked. And that path is going to work, and not a whole lot slower. So, I'm optimistic about it. You've seen, I've gone through the community and gotten a number of people either scheduling or having already adopted the resolution, excellent, which I'm asking you to consider at your next meeting. I'll say any questions? Glad to be a chief of the department.
Is there any questions? If not, we can have our staff, the information together.
Are there any planning and zoning issues that need to be addressed?
I doubt it. This is owned solely by the U.S. Corps of Engineers. Anything that we propose to date is for safe passage of those who choose to use the river. The, that question may be raised if the land ownership of that property shifts from federal ownership to state ownership, and it's a good one, and I appreciate that. One of my master's degrees is in urban and regional planning, and I think I can, I can do the research that needs to get done to get that problem to be eased, if not facilitated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, street naming adjacent to the Oval Post Office. I have listed Rodney Simpson, going to make a free addition to this.
Thank you all. It's been a brief tonight. Last winter, on your firefighters, myself, I was working on the boat dock at the very front end of the dock, up near the singing bridge. And while we was there, somebody drove across the bridge and appeared, they threw the little dog out of their car and into the river. Or at least, that's the way it appeared, because cars going across slowed down and something hit the river. I first thought somebody threw trash in the river, and I couldn't believe they were messing up my river here in Frankfurt. So I was trying to see what they'd thrown in the river, and it turned out it was a small dog. You might have seen it in the newspaper. I remember the Humane Society named it, but it was in the Sunday papers, a cute old dog, lapdog, I call it. Well, it started swimming toward the middle of the river, and the lieutenant with the fire department, myself, started calling the dog and screaming at it, trying to get its attention. Finally, it turned around, started swimming toward us at the boat ramp, and just barely made it. The water was running about 34, 35 degrees at that time of the year, and the dog was there. When he got to us, he was just about done. He'd already went under a couple of times. So we got the dog out, wrapped him up in some coats, and I had the lieutenant with the fire department to call dispatch and get Animal Control over there, pick the dog up, and see what they could do with him, save the dog. And we found out right then that that little alley right there, there's a big, I think I've got the biggest display here tonight, thanks to somebody.
That's probably it.
But we found out that little alleyway there that runs parallel with, excuse me, with St. Clair, I suppose it is, it's not named, and it's not in the computer system. So it took a few minutes for the lieutenant to try to talk the dispatcher into our location so we could get Animal Control, which appeared very quickly after the call was completed. But there was a series of probably three, four minutes worth of explaining where we were at, because it's not been on the computer system. So I found out that could be a problem. You know, that area right there, the boat ramp is a good pickup point for injured boats up and down the river. Ambulances can back down to the boat ramp, and the injured boats can be offloaded from a boat right into the ambulance. K-State has their large river boat there now, with children involved in that, in that operation. Another problem, I'm the Commodore of the Frankfurt Boat Club. Another problem, I'm the Commodore of the Frankfurt Boat Club. I found out that just means I did a lot of work for nothing. Our address, I think, is two oh one, it's Wapping Street. And Wapping Street is up there in front of the library in the old federal building, so it's kind of confusing anytime we have shipments or anything coming to the, to the boat dock. It's kind of hard to explain where we are because we're a half a block from Wapping Street.
That's a good point.
So, you know, I think the safe thing to do is name the street for, if nothing else, for public safety. We've thought about names there at the boat club, and Joy and I have spoke as riverfront development, what have you, and looking at, at the history, and Charles Bogard, one of Jim's employees, has written a book on the packet boats of Kentucky River, and the Corps of Engineers has got several books on the Kentucky River, and this area right here was a landing. In fact, this was known as Lower Landing, the area right there where the boat club's at. So based on the fact that that's an old historical landing, and a name that seems to be, a lot of people seem to like around the river, and give it a nautical theme, what, what we're recommending of naming the street is River Boat Landing. There's a series of river boats starting in the late seventeen hundreds, seventeen-eighty-eight, I think, was the first boat that left Frankfurt and New Orleans, right on up to, to the, into the early nineteen hundreds. River boats would land there and offload products from New Orleans and beyond. In fact, the U.S. Customs House is right there at the top floor in the old federal building, is where goods were tariffed or taxed for the first time entering the United States. They would come across from the far east on sailboats, offload on smaller boats, packet boats, steam boats, and then brought up to Frankfurt and offload there, and that's when the, that's when custom officers actually taxed a lot of the product, or products that come into central Kentucky. So it just seemed like a good historical name for that, for that road, sticking to the nautical theme, and like Ed was quick to point out, we expect to have a lot of boats up here again this year, and we, we're doing a lot of marketing, and Joy's working around the clock almost, maybe two, three hours a day, but they're, they're doing a lot of tourism to really market this, this stretch of the river and this community, and we're getting calls daily almost, from Ohio River folks with a great amount of excitement to come up here. But that's basically it. Just wanted to thank you all for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So any questions tonight, or just think it over?
I think it's a great idea. My only question would be to have the appropriate department heads look at it and make sure it'll work, but off, initial blush, I'd say it's a winner, but there may be something I don't understand that has to do with public safety, or streets, or that kind of thing.
I'm glad to hear that. I think the road should be named because if somebody can't find it, you know, and if we're going to, traffic's going to start picking them in that, in that area, we hope, you know, I mean, it's just, I've been on a couple of streets where it don't have a, either don't have a name on a sign, and it is very difficult.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, fine. Just as, just as a public safety thing, if anyone has an incident from that area, just please tell dispatch you're behind the library at the boat dock. That's what, so just if you tell them, if you say we're behind the library, they know where that is. Correct? They're all shaking their head. Just as a public service?
Deb, Deborah White is going to make a presentation where we discuss a request for preservation easement from the Woods and Water.
Yeah, I'm Deborah White. Deborah White with the Woods and Water Land Trust. We were here two weeks ago, you may remember, because we are concerned about the property, run off the trajectory of, basically, the rest of the carpet. And part of that part is, of course, and the, of which the court, we may just, I don't know if it's growing progress. And we've been hunting through the city staff a little bit and come up with some more information for you when we got into your boxes, and I think Gary Mayes and Matt looking at some possible options there, and we don't care, the legislature doesn't really care how it happens, but we'd just like to see the city consider long-term protection for at least the foresting part of that track. You know, we're not concerned about the options there. That's kind of where we are. And one of the options that we looked at was, there's commercial property in front that you all have for sale right now. I went and talked to Danny Willis, and he hadn't had a chance to really look at reappraising the property relative to a five acre, ten acre, twenty acre, you know, commercial property at the time, but because it's snowed, we haven't been able to get out there, but that was one possibility. If you have any questions or comments?
Commissioner O'Shea, could you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just have a quick, a quick comment, which is, for me, I don't know what I'm for, because for just what she just said, which is, we've, we've not gotten all the information from Danny Willis yet, as far as he's given us some new pricing, but we haven't talked about that yet. He's also indicated some things regarding whether or not we, if we did the easement, what would happen, but he needed to look at it, and it's snowed, so I think it's too early for us to really do anything with this yet until we get more information from him.
Any commissioners, any other comments, questions?
Well, we've gotten different reports from different people about how many acres, too, that we were talking about, as far as the saleable. I remember seeing twenty acres, and there's twenty-six, and somebody else said five point five, so, you know, we need to know where we're going.
I would ask that we get more information, talk to Mr. Willis again, and then look at where we are after all that information, and then talk to them again.
That sounds good. We just want to keep it in front of the commission, and it is for sale, so, you know, and they're remarketing it, so we just want to make sure the commission's aware of it. We're still, we're still wondering what's going to happen now.
As a board member right now, I think, one of the things I, I think that concerns the commission, which it should, is that either it's unconstitutional, counselor, to give a valued piece of property to a nonprofit. Is that, is that basically sort of correct?
Well, the city is constitutionally prohibited from making gifts. So, you know, there has to be a, for example--
Even though we got a lot of flack from some citizens about giving money, for example, to the senior citizens or the shelter, as I said, that's tax dollars, and you shouldn't do that.
Right.
But here, we're talking about something from which the city can make a profit.
Well, I, I think that there are different considerations here. First of all, one is if the easement is granted, then it will ensure that this particular area where the bronze rock crest is located will be protected as long as the easement is in place, which hopefully will be in perpetuity. Okay? So that's one issue. The other issue, of course, is whether granting the easement would have a negative effect on the value of the rest of the land if it's sold to a third party. Okay? Another actual possibility is granting the easement so that that particular plant is protected, and perhaps that area down there is protected for use as a walking trail or something, may actually add value to the piece of property to someone who may want to buy the part that's developable. So those are just issues that need to be discussed and looked at, and then the commission provided with that information before they make a decision.
Right, and that makes sense, and I, one other thought some of us had that we hadn't really talked about was that, you know, the, the Woods and Water Land Trust does not have to be granted the easement. You know, we, we don't have an interest in owning the, you know, owning the, having the easement or taking care of it, but, you know, you do declarations and proclamations and designations in all manner of, of things, so that you may end up being able to, we want you to sell as much property as you can sell and get our tax dollars back, you know, we want you to do that, and, and complete that carpenter farm, because it cost the taxpayers a whole lot of money a few years ago. But there might be another option besides that easement, is what I'm saying.
A resolution, I see.
And frankly, counselor, I believe that we have enough walking trails in our community, and we've got some more already planned, and I think this is something that we should look at as something different than a walking trail, just to preserve that, I mean, it's not that you couldn't walk there, but, you know, a structured walking trail. I think this needs to be a nature-preserved area, you know what I'm saying? A little different from just a, just a walking trail.
Not developed.
Not developed, yeah, but not developed, but preserved and protected, in which case, you know, maybe there is some mechanism that you could use, like, I was trying to think of an example, and the only one I could think of was, and it's probably when you were mayor, commissioners there are, how did the city decide to let the garden club plant that little area by the singing bridge? How did the city decide to give the land to the monument? Is it the Fireman's Memorial?
Jennifer Hills. Jennifer Hills. We didn't give it to the memorial, but--
You said you allowed them to put it there. Well, you know, what I'm saying is that could kind of be the same principle. We don't want a bunch of land.
Yeah.
We want the forested area and the plant protected.
Yeah, Sally, that, that triangle there by the singing bridge goes back to Dad's administration, and Mother was in the garden club. That's how that happened.
Oh, political influence. We never have political influence.
Have you all looked at any entities that might be, that are entities that might be interested in purchasing it, and then keeping it in preservation?
Like national or state or--
Well, like nature conservancy, and there's a variety of those that just buy those things.
We have not asked any consultancy. Everybody, as since, you know, no one has a lot of money anymore.
I've noticed that.
So everybody's kind of tightening and focusing their, their purchases, their purchases. We did look at the state lands program, the Kentucky, the Heritage Land Program, and they said that if you all did not want to give the land as an easement to the state, to the, a nonprofit, that they would consider taking it as a state agency, something like that. So I think there's still lots of the options on the table.
Still a lot of options.
That's what I was asking, okay. Thank you.
You still have a lot of options.
Commissioner Stumbo, just to be sure about what you said, Sally.
Pardon me?
Just to be clear about what you said, you really would not want a trail of any kind through there?
Well, I mean, I'm not, I can't speak for the trust, I'm just one board member.
So I'm president of the land trust, Chris Schimmler.
She's president of the land trust.
And maybe Deb can help me out, but I guess the point to impart on you all is this is really rare plant that's found in very few counties in the world, and Franklin County happens to be a host of, of a really important population of them, and it would be good to do the right thing by this special population, and a different type of management for this forested ravine is in order. You know, it's, it's, shouldn't be a place where people can ramble about wherever they want, because they're going to destroy the plant. So it would have to be especially marked trail and specially planned trail if there were to be a trail.
Well, I'm definitely for preserving the bronze rock crest, but I like, as you know, earlier, I don't know that landscape because we was going to take a visit out there, and we're in bad weather conditions.
We'd like to go out when you want.
Maybe spring, we can let us all go on hike.
That's true. And then the other answer to your question is that the land around protected, permanently protected lands goes up in value.
So, there's no other commission questions, any? My question would just, you just, this would be something that the Woods and Water Trust would like to do as a natural area, more so, I think would probably be the more appropriate term, a natural area.
Definitely.
And then, and then that means it's just not--
Preserved area. Preserved area.
It may be possible to tie a trail in with the upper part of all that state land, I believe, you know, we've talked about, but, I mean, it, whether it happens, there's a trail or not, we have no concern. City weather, the trail.
Go ahead, I'm going to, then I'm going to ask Andrew Kamak, who's been our forester for a number of years, a technical question, but go ahead, Commissioner.
Where is he?
He's behind you.
I was just going to say--
Go ahead, Commissioner.
What's the one here to go first?
Okay. Mr. Kamak was with us from the early days when we started the urban forestry program with the city, and then became our first arborist, and has been involved in a lot of these issues as Deb has, and Sally Stumbo, and Chris Schimmler, but I guess Andrew was there when we found the bronze rock crest first. So what would, what would you have, she have some thoughts on this?
Well--
Yes, you did.
It's like Deborah was saying, it's only found in three counties in Kentucky and one or two counties in Tennessee where the same outcrop, the same limestone outcrop is, and it, so it's, it's quite major. And I think putting an easement on that property, or just having the city keeping the property and, and resolving in some way to protect that, to this, to take care of the bronze rock crest. Now, the board has not made an official, the Woods and Waters Land Trust has not said we are against the trail. They have not said we are for a trail. I think these are the things that could be discussed. I think Parks has said they're not sure that a linear trail there would be, would, would be the best kind of thing, if it worked really well. On the other hand, I think Rob Moore said if, if there were a trail that was put around the entire carpenter farm, or the entire development out there, it might be a real benefit to the city. And it's my opinion that you could have a trail and protect the bronze rock crest. But I do believe that, you know, that, that there are not people that aren't sure that that's a good place for a trail, that it just, you know, I think it needs to be established. I know I didn't--
Well, I guess we'll have staff get his reports back, continue to talk.
Thank you.
Folks, ask his questions if you need to, or just send his emails. But thank you all for coming in.
So, Mayor, are we going to, okay, because this was like two, three months ago, we talked about this, right? So can we, like, make some sort of decision here in the next, like, two months? Can we, like, because it's been a while since we began this conversation.
Spring will help.
I think it would be, I think it's really important for the board and some of the staff people--
Yeah.
--and the Woods and Water people to go over there and walk it and look at it, because, you know, you can't feature what it looks like.
And don't mess up the--
And we could plant a field trip.
So we can set up a field trip.
It takes a regulator, too.
Yeah.
All go.
Well, thank you all. Um, let's see, next item, council on aging request for water heater reimbursement. I have Marcelle Jenkins, who is the executive director of the Franklin County Council on Aging.
Yes.
Did I do it right?
It is. Also known as the Frankfurt Senior Activities Center. I've been excited, I've been wanting to come and speak to you all, and I would like, if I could come, like, once a quarter, and kind of give you an update of what's going on with the center, and, and invite you all to come and be a part. I know that Commissioner Sauer is there quite a bit.
Kind of advanced in age.
Now.
I would grieve to that.
You know, the center is--
Are you making a point of order? State your, state your--
Grievance.
The center really has-- The center really has come to life, I would think, in the past year. I know you probably noticed some things in the newspapers where we're doing new programs. We have extended the hours of the center, which I thought was important because, you know, a lot of seniors still are working, and if you have your hours from eight to four, then you are really keeping them from being a part of the senior center that's for all Franklin and Frankfort and Franklin County residents. So, I thought it was real important that we keep some nighttime hours. Tuesdays and Thursdays we're open until seven o'clock. We have a lot of nighttime activities going on and it's, it really has increased our membership. Just to let you know, January, we lowered our membership age to 50, and that has been an astounding... You're looking like, what?
No, we just looking at each other.
We're in.
Yeah, I mean, AARP recognizes 50 years old as being a senior. And when I went to a conference, sorry about your luck, y'all folks. When I went to a regional conference, I was anxious to meet with other directors of senior centers in different states. And I'll tell you that all the centers were either 50 or 55. So, I came back to the board and I said, boy, we are, we're missing it here. We need to, we need to lower this age, get people more involved because like, unlike other organizations within this city, this is the one organization that is for everybody in this, in the city and county. There's no stipulations like for the Simon House or for the men's shelter, women's shelter. It is for everybody. That's really unique.
If you're 50.
If you're 50. But, you know, you can't say that about a lot of other places. If you're not to that age yet, I encourage you to come out and volunteer, see what's going on because you're banking into your future of how you want the center to be. And it's really, really important. I want to hear from, from everybody because one day you're going to be there. I'm one, I'm almost one year away from, from being there. It's not the center that you are used to, or if you've never been there, I invite you to come out. You will be surprised. We're having our open house this Thursday from five to eight. We'll have finger foods, Soul Jams want to be there playing. We'll have tours going on for the center. Come out, I'm telling you, you'll, you will be really amazed at what the things that are going on there, how it's reaching out. Socialization helps to keep people independent longer. And guess what? That saves tax dollars because they're not going into these nursing homes prematurely, which that comes back and we all, you know, are affected by that. So, I'm saying let's, just like I have on here, keeping it young and keeping it fun. That's what we're all about, having fun. There's nothing wrong with having some fun. So, why am I here today? The county's already allotted us $3,000 to offset the $6,000 water heater bill. Why is it so expensive? Because it's commercial grade. You do not, that water heater wasn't even in Franklin County. There are certain types of requirements when you operate a commercial kitchen, you have to have commercial equipment, and it's not cheap. To my surprise, I go in on a Saturday morning, like I do almost every weekend, and water's everywhere. Well, of course, you know, I'm thinking water pipes, you know, and I'm just trying to figure it all out. And I was able to get some bids on a Saturday, get some people out, and we also, we're the only center in our 17 county area that operates a commercial kitchen. Very proud of that because every other center and home-delivered meals client gets a boxed lunch every other day. They are not visited daily. Franklin County's very, very unique. And we are also part of a national program through U.S. Foods that it allows us to keep our costs, if not lower than what the Bateman meal cost is. It's a win-win for all of our residents here in Frankfort because they are being visited every day, they're getting a home-cooked meal every day. And just to give you a few, last quarter, we served 4,643 home-delivered meals. Our congregate meals that we serve in-house there, 2,681, and we also served 224 meals to our adult day program. It's very important, just, it's so important. And with that water heater being down because of health code reasons, you cannot operate your kitchen. So, it was something that had to be done really fast because a lot of people were not going to be able to have a nutritious meal. We got it fixed in one day, and that was pretty remarkable. So, I, I am here asking for money, Commissioner Roach.
What's the amount on that, did you say?
Three.
3,000. So, I am asking that the city would match the county. And...
We did have two bids on that.
Yeah, we did. We had, we had bids.
Did Judy, you still the chair?
Yes, Judy Campbell.
Judy Campbell is chair of the, the board, and I don't know if you wanted to say anything or not.
We did have more than one bid on the price of this. Your hands are pretty well tied when you have to have the commercial and the special hookup and, as she said, you shut your kitchen down, you can't serve anything at all while your kitchen is down. So, Marcell's our, our point guard, she got right in there and got the two bids and got someone that was willing to work on the weekend and get it in for us. So, that was pretty important.
So, you're asking 3,000 from us and then the county's already done 3,000?
The county's already have paid us 3,000. Yeah. Yeah.
Commissioner Roach had a question for you, or can Miss Campbell either?
Well, I guess I just, um, I think I may have an alternative. I don't think we can, or in my mind, I don't think we can approve additional monies for any nonprofits because once you go down that road, everybody will be down here, and we don't have the resources. But, but what I'd be willing to do, if you, if you can wait a month on the $3,000, I'd be willing to work with the commission to raise it privately rather than using city money. We can raise, between the five of us, can raise $3,000 in a month. I don't think that's a very difficult task. But, I, I would rather not have a precedent, which is why I was against the $5,000 extra we gave last year for the same reason. Because once we give it to you all, the other agencies that want money, of which they've already sought, 43% of the agencies this year want additional money over what they got last year, even though we're not going, under the budget, we're giving them all the same amount, what will happen is they'll all start coming down here periodically, and they all have great stories. It may not be as compelling as yours, but for somebody else, it'll be really compelling. And we'll nev, and we'll never get past this. And this precedent is a problem, though, because if everybody comes down here and then we've started doing it privately, then everybody will expect that too, but I'm just hopeful that there won't be too many requests. But, I'd rather do that than use the city's money.
Mr. Chris Roach, we'll take money however we want it.
I had a feeling that you would.
I had a question, but it's not about...
I'll give you the first 12.
Well, thank you.
I think we'll be able to do it, but...
Right. And I definitely, you know, it's a worthwhile, I guess a tough task that you have because on senior night, you always have great food out there. Who does the cooking?
It's, Jim Griffin, Steve Saylor does.
And I was also surprised...
He's a chef, he's great.
And I was also surprised, and I looked at your profit expense, only $2,000 for meals in six months?
We would like to come back and pick up the check whenever you're able to. Two days, two weeks, a month. We'll be back.
Well, I was just saying, I think that because it is a situation where something, I don't want to call it an emergency situation, but it is...
Well, it is.
In order to keep the center open, it's not a...
It's not just the center.
Well, I was going to say, the meals program is...
The meals program.
And what we look at in, in terms of being able to use city funds, public funds for situations such as this, is there public purpose involved? And the meal program is something that's a lifeline for some folks. So, I think under the circumstances, it's not an everyday occurrence that the water heater and the other agencies would, would go down because it is required to have a certain level of, well, commercial water heater because of the kitchen. I don't think that it's a problem that would set a precedent that would open the door for anybody to come in because this was sort of an extenuating circumstance. That's just my thought.
I understand. I think we already opened the door when we gave $5,000 additional last year, and we see the door opening once again this year when they're coming for 3,000. So, now we're up to eight. So, you're right, it is a one-time thing, but this is an operating expense. It's like if somebody has a whatever and their air conditioner goes out, you're going to have to fix it. So, naturally, what they normally would do is try to find the funds, but my guess is they're doing the best they can to try to find the funds, that's why they're here.
How old was the previous water heater?
About 20 years old is what I was told. So, it, it will...
Ready to go.
Oh, yeah. Because commercial with as much use as what that gets, 12 to 15 years is usually the max. So, we really went way beyond.
Well, I would think unless the commission disagrees with that, that we could do this with the assumption, with the, under the guidelines of public purpose, I'll ask the solicitor if I'm correct or not in that, just to be sure.
If the money, if we're supporting an agency that's carrying out a function that the city would otherwise carry out, and this, I think in many ways does carry out functions that the city would otherwise do, provides medical screening, cities sometimes do that, it provides transportation, city provides transportation, provides education. I mean, a lot of cities do provide those type of services, so it is a payment that could be made.
And it's at a lower rate than, if the city were to try to provide those services, it would be much cost, more costly than what...
Go ahead, Commissioner. No, you go ahead.
Well, I kind of like Roach's idea. Is there something that the city commission could come into the facility and do that would, that could be like a fundraising thing just for that purpose, like, that would be like an event that we could just come and we could do something together? I mean, I didn't want to think about it overnight, like something created that would actually be fun so that you're actually getting the community to come in and to know they're contributing to that one particular thing. So, the people that don't come every day to utilize the services, if we advertised it appropriately, then they might come for whatever that function is that the city commission is sort of being a part of, and then they see the facility, and so they want to contribute to that particular thing. But, I can't think of an idea yet, can you, Roach?
It just seems like it's a lot of effort for something that would be easily done if we just appropriate...
But, you know, it's back to that citizen engagement thing, it's a lot of effort to get people involved. But, once you get people involved and caring about those programs, then you've got, I don't want to say clientele, but a supportive group in the community that's aware of the needs. And sometimes it's just easier to do the government handout, but in the long run, it's more costly to do that. So, if there's something that we could do, tagging on to Roach's suggestion, that would hook the people to the center that aren't already a part of that, if there's something this commission could do to bring them in, I kind of like that idea. But, I'd have to think about what that might be. You all might have an idea what that might be.
Well, because I do a lot of events, I can tell you that probably half of that, trying to get people there, is going to be spent on advertising. You've got a food cost. And so, now you're looking, trying to get 3,000, now you're probably going to have to get 4,500 to offset your initial cost to do an event.
Let us take your idea home and discuss it. And we are having a big fish fry music event in May, and would love to have you all involved personally and as a group, and we can, we can work out the deal on that. And when we had the group last March, we had a community effort to clean and paint the center. We had 80 volunteers.
Wow.
In a day and a half, we painted 16,800, 18,644 square feet, cleaned it up. We didn't ask you to do that. We did it ourselves. We asked for $55,000, which is way below what we need, but we struggle with that and we thank you for that. But, last year we were cut 5,000 because Bluegrass Cap wanted some money too. And I'm not here to say anything about the Community Action Partnership. But, that was, what we felt was 5,000 was some of our money that went to them. So, the 5,000 you're talking about was ours to begin with, and so, don't count that the way you look at it. I don't look at it the same way, but, but, you know, we are here to do the communities, what the community wants us to do. And the best way we know how to serve the community is to help, it's not only, the daytime people are people who need a meal, who need a place, who need socialization, who need education, and all the things that we have to offer, but the nighttime and the other events, the big music events and things, it's a whole different population. So, you have a cross-section of the community for what we do. And I know you all appreciate what we do because if you didn't, then part of that responsibility would be back on the city fathers. So, give us the best consideration that you can, however you decide for us to be in this partnership with you. And just give us the best shot you can and we'll, we'll go with it. So, I know we're supposed to have five minutes and we've taken at least 10.
We don't limit on the agenda. I would say too, if, I would support this, I don't know, is there two other people that will support it?
Which program are you talking to?
Well, that's the county. Did the county already appropriated 3,000 from there? I'm not sure what to count, but we've got money in our general fund account and our reserve account, so it's, it's not a problem.
Yeah. Well, you know, we all know people too in the community, and I think we can probably raise it.
And, and actually, I was going to say before your statement, I think we should look at all of those. We just got this information, it's very important, it needs to be done. We need to look at the budget, you know, it might not be 3,000 that we need from here. We got a $20 donation already. I, I would make a donation, then we talk about other funds. Instead of locking ourselves up, some people said they would like to sleep on it, but I think sometime we make a quick decision, and it, it does snowball. And I, I know that you need to get that stove going.
So, you can take it right away.
Yeah, we've already wasted it.
Okay. So, we're just looking at certain funds. But, I think we have time to look at all those different options.
Well, Mayor, I'm okay either way. I just think one has a more immediate payoff and benefit, and the other has the more long-term sort of thing, and I think we ought to do something.
They just need, they need help now. And they struggle, and I've sent in with, sent them with...
And I do, I want to thank you all because I know you're going to be there serving on Wednesday for the National March for Meals, and you'll get a really hands-on feel. I know that Chief Abrams, he's going to be riding with one of the meals drivers so he can see what goes on in the home, and there's some other people. And I'm, I'm excited that you all want to come out and be a part of that and, and see. And I think it's important that you do, you get a firsthand view of, of what we do. It's, it's, it's important.
We can get it done.
Well, that's why I want to say 100% support it, since I've seen those great programs and trying to take care of our seniors, there's just nothing more important.
So, Commissioner Sauer, you say you're fine with the 3,000? And you're fine with it?
I'm fine with, I'm fine with doing the 3,000.
I'm fine with raising it into privately, I'm not fine with using our money, the city's money.
Which way do you want to go, Commissioner?
Well, I'm, I'm fine with supplying the money, but I, I would just want to make sure that we have, you know, we, we just got this and looked at it. I just want to make sure we've looked at it all because I, I do think decisions we make now, we've got to be able to, be able to support that decision, and I want, you know, you ought to get 3,000. You know, I'm just, I'm throwing in my mind, okay, do we just take it from a pocket? I've not looked at the budget, I talked to Steve to say where is this going to come from? You know?
Do I ask? Let me ask Steve Dawson, our budget director, because right now, I think the last I saw, we are under budget in a lot of areas.
Well, we're, we're over, we're, when you say under budget, we're over, we're exceeding our revenue right now. We're working on the budget for, the year we're in right now, we're, we're fine, looks like we're fine.
And that's what this would come from?
I'm working on the budget right now, and that's the dilemma we're in, is kinda what Robert was saying. You know, we've kind of, we talked last, last work session about allocating money for the stormwater project, so you know, we've kinda made a commitment there to try to work within our revenue stream to take care of those expenditures. You know, that's gonna, to be honest with you, that's gonna crowd out some of the other, you know, the expenditures that we have now. I'm working on this bud, working on the budget right now, and that's why I sent you all a memo today. I've got requests, last year we gave 373,000 for 14, 15, the agency request. This year, I've got requests for 406,000 right now, and I've seen it, it's increased significantly from last year because, you know, I've been watching the patterns. So we've got about 33,000 more requests this year than we had, and it's spread over nine different agencies, which everybody, you know, like, you know, Deborah was saying, everybody's struggling right now to make ends meet, including, to be honest with you, including ourselves, you know? So, you know, we just, we've got a, you know, everybody's request is gonna, is gonna be felt strongly, so that's kind of where we are, to be honest with you.
Well, but that, no, it doesn't, we are, in the 2014, 2015 budget, right now, what is our current cash position and what have we allocated that has, some of the areas have not met the 100%?
Well, like you said, we're under budget right now, year-to-date, we're under budget. We've not exceeded our, our budget, our, we've got excess receipts over expenditures. Now, you know, I don't know how that's gonna flush out, you know, through the end of the year, but, you know, I've projected, you know, that we'll have a surplus at the end of this year, which we're gonna use, you know, we've committed that money tentatively for stormwater right now.
Well, and you talk about this subsidy request, they're not all agencies that are dealing with, well, for example, some of those are, like you can have a development.
Right.
That's not in the same category as some people would put, for example, serving meals to seniors that don't have the means to, to purchase hot meals. Correct? And then I'm trying to think what else is...
Rosam, which is people who can't afford their rent, which could be even worse than the others, and their utilities, or they're losing their place.
And if we total all those up, it's less than 2% of our total budget, it's like probably 1.4, 1.5, something. Correct?
Yeah, it's, it's less than 1%, but here's, here's the, here's the deal, the agency requests, the ones that are providing, I reckon, providing a service, I've got requests now, last year we gave those folks 205,000. I've got requests for those agencies of 236. So, you know, I've got an additional $30,000 request from those, making up the majority of what's, you know, asked, requested for, is those agencies providing, you know, a service to the general public. It's really, that's where, that's where the, that's where the bulk of the, you know, the additional monies is coming from, is those agencies that are, that are providing service.
But the commission's already said they're not, I don't think there's a majority of the commission to increase that, so that should stay the same, that budget line will stay flat, according to what I've heard from the commission to say tonight.
I, I think that's right, Mayor, but my guess is, is if individuals came down here and asked, each one of them asked and gave the same compelling presentation that we've heard tonight, that ever, that the same thing would occur again, and again, and again, and again. So you're right, that's what we've agreed to collectively, but I think individually. But I'm, I'm a no, but I'm, I'm, I think it's well worth doing, so I'm happy to raise it privately, but if three people want to use public funds for it, then roll wide on.
Well, it, it sounds like, Mayor, we just need a little bit of time. Just a little bit of time.
If you don't want to rush it, but...
To...
Well, why don't we do...
Talk among ourselves.
Yeah, why don't, if we have ideas, we can shoot them to the manager, and maybe we can decide in two weeks at the meeting.
Sure.
Is that Commissioner Roach, is that...
That's fine, with me.
Two weeks. That's good.
So hold off on doing anything as far as starting to raise money?
Well, you might have this great idea when you get home, that we all think, hey, that would be fun to do.
Well, mine is just to get on the telephone and say, will you give 100 or 500 dollars to this cause?
Okay.
And it's not a great idea, but it...
No, it's a good idea.
Because it doesn't engage the community like what you're talking about.
Well, it does because those people that you call know that, where the money's going, and that might help them.
They might give, hey, they might give again.
They might give again, that's a whole idea.
Might be a new giver, so they could get even more money.
So like, can we do this, like, so there's one idea that Mr. Zizhop, like, maybe you can collect ideas, and there's one idea, and if you come up with a bunch of ideas that maybe, like, you can recommend one to us, or like in our next vote meeting, we can actually decide how we, which way we're gonna go? So we can do something by, in two weeks, we can do something?
Sure.
Some way or another?
Don't y'all stop thinking now because y'all might have something, because when this money's coming in, I don't know if we need to be sending it out here or out there.
You know, maybe the...
Yeah, I'd probably, the best way is gonna probably be going and calling, because I'm telling you, if you do an event, you're gonna be way above the 3,000. So now you're gonna have to be more, about 4,500.
I was thinking our mayor could come do a concert on the drums, you know, we could advertise.
There you go. He comes out all the time.
You've got, you've got that luncheon, you've got that luncheon Wednesday, don't you?
Well, that's, that's totally, people that come to that are, they, it's a whole different... A whole different...
Okay, alright.
I do quickly want to introduce Tammy Peyton from the hospital, she's on the board, and Dr. Brett Scott, they're board members, and...
Thanks for having us. Tom Curran is our treasurer.
Our treasurer, he's, he's ready to get the check.
Well, to me, the, a worse president, if you want to say precedence, could be people that say, well, we'll just go ask the commission to do fundraisers for us. I know that, I'm already limited time-wise in doing those, and some of us already are doing a lot, share various...
I was just, I was just...
So we might have talked to people, it's like, hey, I've already given what I can this year. I think it's easier for 3,000, I think we're making it a lot more complicated around. Just when you think about it, we're providing a link to people who don't have hot meals, and that's what the water heater is going to be used for, to have the kitchen work. It's not, they need a hot water heater for anything other than it's gotta be a commercial-grade heater because of the kitchen.
You're great.
So, and providing medical screenings, as Steve Turner said, but this is...
And we understand, we're all in this together, the whole community's in this together, all of us, so we'll do whatever you all say. Thank you.
Thank you all. I'll see you Wednesday and Thursday.
Yes.
You get this back to me if you're done, Mayor.
Well, y'all are gonna want to give it to, I want to use checks. If it goes to the city, it would go directly to the, they'd make their checks out to the municipal board.
Council on Angels.
They don't care about that.
Next item is, I'm ready to make this possible downtown, state office, building closure.
What have we thought?
Has been put off.
Who's making that presentation?
I guess I'm at fault, Mayor, of just asking...
Oh, okay, sorry.
Where, where the city stood, or has anybody heard? You know, my concern is the Capitla Plaza Tower, and it's possible closures, but I've heard rumors that maybe that's not gonna happen.
It's up in the air and the plan would be, if that building were to be torn down, a new building would be built back next to Trenton, on the site in that area, and it would be, they'd have a campus-type setting. That's all we know.
So we stay downtown?
They will keep what they can down there. The other jobs that were gonna be with this place, we're gonna go to Carpenter Farm.
Yeah, and those people that are at Carpenter Farm are not gonna come down to Broadway or St. Clair and eat lunch.
And some of those folks don't do it now anyway, but I know, I get your point.
I understand, I understand.
Because they had a cafeteria, Transportation Building has a cafeteria that they built in it.
Yeah.
But that's all...
But the tower doesn't, the tower doesn't, they've got a snack bar and that's it.
I think, I think you do hear all, everything, and we've heard, I've heard just what the mayor has said, but I've not heard anything very definitive, and I've heard like different people, and it's because it's not. But I think we, as a commission, need to look at this and determine what would be best for Frankfurt, and then lobby, in a sense lobby, to see if we can't accomplish some of those things.
On along, I've said, you know, that it ought to be less expensive to rehab the tower than to tear it down and build a new one. I mean, I don't know how...
Yeah, it's what they would have to do because of the, the way the tower's constructed in the center of the elevator shafts.
Yeah.
The cost to renovate it would have been almost as much as it would cost to build, to demolish and build a new one back because of the stand, and the wasted space.
Yeah.
That was, that report's been out there for, since the Fletchers were here, I don't remember what year that was, 2005, 2006, in that range.
Yes.
Just because of the type of construction they used, it was a, probably not the best, I won't say it because I'm not an architect, but it wasn't a very good use of space.
Well, I've heard that complaint as well. I just would hate, you know, hate to lose the number of people there that do business downtown.
And we have talked with folks, I've had conversations with the governor's office and with our capital development committee, we've met and had those conversations with the various cabinet secretaries on the importance of keeping downtown. That's where we were able to lobby to keep the jobs within the city limits, and that's where the Carpenter Farm came up because of the other options of going down to the industrial park area.
Yeah, yeah.
So they've listened, they've been very, very good to do that. They're well aware of losing occupational tax and losing the downtown connection, so they're aware of it.
Yeah, well, I think we ought to do that, continue to pursue it, if there is any light at the end of the town. That's all.
It's okay. So is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item, we're skipping Stormwater Utility Plan, a report on fire inspections. Chief Sloan is here.
Pass these around. Sure. It's just a, put together a quick copy. We think that we've got all the city properties that we inspect after Commissioner Sauer asked last month. One thing is I'll say, in Vance, it looked much larger on the computer screen than this print that I just copied, I just sent out, so maybe it'd be a first of all. But the bottom line is, we do inspect all city property. The only one that kinda has us right now that, that we did not realize we were not getting is perhaps the lab over to the sewer plant, and perhaps, I think probably what we're doing is getting it and treating it as one address as opposed to doing a separate inspection of it. But I do think that it's probably being gotten, I'm going to follow up on that. Otherwise, all of our city property that we, that came to the top of our heads anyway are in compliance and, and they're inspected yearly. They were, all were inspected in '14. The fire stations are typically done as a training event, when you have new firefighters, someone's beginning to do company inspection, we'll do those through the, through the, go through the fire department, pick out whatever, whatever may not be the case, but that is about it.
So this annual inspection occurs when?
Well, each property, looks like we had most of it in May, but we, we do it, I'm sorry, did not make it all the way around?
No.
Oh, I forgot. My fault, my fault, I was train fixed by...
We have a lot of them done in May, but it's just handed out by district, and so throughout the year, we, we have inspections, every month except for, most time January, we say January.
Okay. Thank you.
That's about what there is to it. Thank you.
Next item, a report on Neighborhood Watch and Stormwater Shifts from Chief Abrams.
Does it water you?
A hundred gallons.
Neighborhood Watch, I know that's, that's a big priority for our department right
now, and again, with the new shift schedules, I have directed the captains to assign patrol officers to specific neighborhoods of responsibility. For lack of a better term, we kinda call it adopted neighborhood, adopted business, and I'm, I want those officers to be the liaison for those particular neighborhoods and communities. The, the biggest challenge that we have going forward is getting people to want a Neighborhood Watch. I think we're, we're set up and ready and...
I want to tell them each other.
Well, and you know, quite honestly, it's going to go hand in hand, and I don't look for there to be a huge influx all at once. I, I think it's gonna go hand in hand with an increased community-oriented policing approach, and the more that we can garner those relationships and try to get neighborhoods to bond together, and you know, unfortunately, in this day and time, people very much live individual lives as opposed to years past when it, the community was a little tight. So that, that's kind of our goal overall, is to unify those communities and then get that interest, you know, maybe introduce people to their neighbors that they may not even know, you know, stuff like that, but we've got, and I don't know if anybody had an opportunity yet to look at the app preview, did anybody get a chance? It was, I know that list of instructions on how to download it was pretty long. Be happy to show you all that if you, if you're interested, but we do have the website and we are getting ready to subscribe to this company that's gonna provide a mobile app, Frankfurt PD, and, and it's got different, it's really neat, and I'd love to show y'all sometime. But it, it's gonna have forms on it, it's gonna have the citizens' comments, the citizen survey, it's gonna be, you can take it right on your phone, and it's also got an area where you can request a Neighborhood Watch, and at that point, you know, we'll look and say, okay, if it's, say, Indian Hills and this, this officer is designated for that, then the officer will go and facilitate it. And quite honestly, Neighborhood Watches are not a lot of legwork for the police, it's just a matter of us getting it started, and then it's gonna require that the community, you know, that, and the officer will be available to answer any questions, and certainly if they have a specific problem, they will have an officer individually to go to. So that, that's kind of our challenge and our task right now, but we're on it, and like I said, we're poised and ready to, to go anytime, you know, we get requests in different areas, and we're gonna actively solicit those, but you know, it's gonna be more successful if we don't solicit, if they want it. You know, we gotta teach them and say, hey, look, we want you to want this, and here's why, here are your benefits. So it's gonna take a matter of, you know, especially now that the weather's hopefully gonna break, you know, people getting outdoors more, and hopefully we can get that word out there and advertise the benefits of getting involved in that type of thing, and we're ready to go whenever people start asking for it.
Well, I know, in my neighborhood, we were talking about this, like, last summer, we're ready to do one right now, so like, if you could just get with me afterwards, and I'll get the officer's name for our group, and we want to actually expand beyond, you know, we've got a group of people that are actively watching our area right now, but we want to extend it up several streets, and there's like five of us in here, maybe each of us could take a couple of neighborhoods and kinda work with that neighborhood to get that started, I don't know, what do y'all think? I don't know. Maybe we could help you with that.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
Like if we could divvy those up or something.
A lot of people, I feel like a lot of people, you know, if the police come and say, hey, you should do this, they'll go, okay, we'll do it, but if they're not committed to it, it's, it's gonna be an effort in futility, so.
Well, they're, the, you guys are doing a really good job.
Well, thank you.
Like, we've been noticing y'all coming through a lot, and we've been noticing some things happening and people getting caught, and you're doing a great job, and so we're trying to, we're trying to help you.
Sounds like somebody who hadn't gotten caught yet.
We're like trying to help you guys, and see, I think we all have connections to different neighborhoods, so we could help the police do that job in those neighborhoods with that, I think.
Right, sure. And like I said, I'll, I'll do some more public education on this stuff, and I'm gonna get, I think I've, I've got a thing going where I'm gonna try to work with the plant board to get on a weekly cable TV show, kind of offer some of these things out, and at least guide people to the, the creation of our, our new website, and so we can start getting the data that we need, anyway, but also, that stuff's available there, and the more we can advertise and get this mobile app out once it's up and running, official, you know, how easy is that gonna be? You know, you can click on your phone and simply request a Neighborhood Watch.
Hey, Chief Abrams, in my neighborhood, I've got five policemen that live there.
Use two Neighborhood Watchers.
You're in good shape.
Yeah, do they get to...
Yeah, do they get to, one of them get to be the neighborhood person or you sell them somewhere else?
Most likely, you know, because it's not going to, the, the assigned neighborhoods or the adoptive neighborhoods, they aren't necessarily going to be where the officer's going to be working, but, you know, because it's too hard to do that. So, you know, we're going to just designate, but quite honestly, yeah, I mean, that, that we would certainly prefer when we have officer in district or in neighborhood, they're going to have a vested interest in it that much more, so, you know, we'll go ahead and assign them there as much as possible.
A lot of people already know the officer.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. You're right to say, you know, the person has to really be interested first. Uh, one thing the community has is a lot of churches. You know, I'm thinking the Thornhill Baptist Church over there, you know, as far as locations, if you want to meet, I'm sure those churches would open their doors up if you get the interest.
Right, true.
And I think you get the interest when people start really paying attention to what's actually going on and so we've had a rash of things over the past several years which seem to be dissipating now, but, um.
I love the concept. I mean, the more people, the more eyes we've got on the street, you know, you're always there. We're there as much as we can be. So, you know, it's, it's a true partnership and.
I like to sit out and watch and wait for it to happen so I can be the first to call. Here's a license plate number and second, and they're doing a great job, they respond and they catch them and it's really great.
I'm sure that that's not.
And I'll leave here. I'm sorry, Mayor.
You don't want to do that. She's just teasing.
Not really.
Couple of quick things. I would like either at the voting meeting or the next work session for you to come display the, the app. I'm excited about that because I'm more, to be honest, different people are excited about different things. I'm not as excited about some of these things that we've been talking about. I'm involved in three neighborhood watches, it properties I'm involved in and really know that it's only as good as how excited the people that are living there are about it. I've had people at times excited and then sometimes nobody's excited, so it really doesn't work as well as when you have some excited people. You've got to have key kinds, like, like Commissioner Bauer's talking about herself and others, if you've got four or five key people that are willing to really get on it, then that makes a difference, but if you don't, it's. But I'm more excited, I think, about the, the idea of using smartphones with an app to text tips and to text crimes that are happening right then to you all. I think that's probably got a lot of potential to really lower crime over the long run.
Right, and I think so. And I think in, in this day and time, it's kind of, that's where the technology, that's what people do. I mean, they, they will.
Take a picture and text it to.
And that, it does, it has that capability where if you see a crime, they can literally take a picture of it and send it to the app.
That's what I want to see.
With the, yeah, and it's, it's still in the developing stage, but I, I'll show you.
When do you think it'll be ready to be implemented?
Well, uh.
Your goal operation.
I, I think within a month.
Great.
And it's, it's just a subscription and, uh, I mean, they've already got the, the basic mock-up on it, it's just a matter of populating that with our specific information inside the window.
So you'll demonstrate that in two weeks?
Yeah, I can do it now. I, I mean, I could, it's on my phone, where my phone is.
It'd be hard to see on that phone with everybody.
I don't know, I don't know, I'll have to bring, I'll bring Detective Davidson, I'm sure he can put it up on it. I wouldn't be able to.
That'd be great.
But I can show you on the phone.
See it on the big screen.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Chief. Great job. Okay, tentative agenda, anybody have items on the agenda? Everybody? All right. Uh, staff report?
Public works.
Uh, we don't have any thoughts.
Oh, I do have one thing that I wanted to mention and I, I know I gave it to Mr. Zizov today, but because the, we had the meeting planned with DFI to discuss the, the stakeholders as far as with permitting and downtown events. And it's been canceled two or three times with the weather, but I just was looking back through my notes today and realized it's tomorrow at, at 5:00 PM at the public safety building. So anyone who would be interested in coming there, please, please join us. So 5:00 PM and I, I think she's invited every merchant in downtown, so I don't really know what to expect. We'll probably utilize the EOC room if it gets too big for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just like permission to add to the agenda, an agreement with FRMC that allows, uh, we have paramex students, REMT students that have to get clinical hours, it allows them to go into the hospital, it includes immunizations, they have to get a background check, that type of thing. Actually just got the letter today, I'll get it over to Mr. Moore tomorrow and, uh, get a review of it, but we already have one in place and it's just a renewal. We, we don't, uh, it's just an agreement, that's about it.
Oh, yeah, sure. Sorry, no objection to the agenda.
Mr. Planning?
Uh, two items. One, uh, the discussion about working on Saturdays, Tim and I met today and I'll be providing a summary of pros and cons and questions and comments to you all this week. Their item is the joint land use study. The committee has completed their items. The planning commission has made a recommendation to you all. I didn't know if you wanted to have a work session just for that item or.
Say it's easier still than agenda, I think I'm going to have, it won't be that much discussion since it's not going to be the controversial parts, correct?
Ideally, we call that part correct.
I think you're correct, Mayor.
Then if that's, uh, would you like to add it to this month's agenda or next month's? County is reviewing it on the 20th. Is there a tendency to take, you know, here, of March?
I'll just, I may as well do it on the 3rd, so. Same with objection, we put on 23rd?
Go ahead.
It's going to be just a matter of a couple of minutes, correct?
See, approval of a memorandum of agreement and approval of the recommendations from the planning.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Look, I couldn't get you today, so I'll ask real quick. So how much does that delay us, that meeting that you had in February where that you're going back again with the downtown South Frankfurt?
Uh, the historic district.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Um, we are meeting in April, uh, so it's.
It would have been the same thing anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we're good, we're okay.
All right, thank you.
We're on track, I guess.
Thank you.
Two quick things, I hope, in early April to bring you all in, a little quick update with some pictures on the aquatic center progress. We had a progress meeting and I'll show you where we stand. And, uh, believe it or not, we still have been working quite a bit. The buildings are under roof, so we're doing a lot of interior things and, uh, so we're, we're moving right ahead on that. And then I'd like to add, permission to add to the agenda, on the aquatic center, a change order for $1,481,000. It's a deduction. It's a, if, if you recall, uh, the contractor was nice enough to allow us to do DPOs, direct purchase orders.
Oh, good.
For $1,500,000 to save on the 6% sales tax, would save the city approximately $96,000.
Nice.
Wow.
So we're purchasing those direct, but it makes for a change in contract, so I'd like to add that to the agenda, please.
Good addition.
Can I, Jim, this is a very nice package you sent out, uh, I thought you was going to brief something in it. That was just for our own information?
Oh, well, that, that's our annual report we put out every year for all the different things, sports and events and stuff that went on in 2014.
It's a good read.
Thank you, that's our annual, annual report, thank you all.
Community relations?
I just wanted to point out, um, on the agenda, on the transit, um, resolution, the city clerk and I got our wires crossed and those numbers aren't exactly right. The operating is, but the, um, capital is not, so I'll update that for you.
City attorney?
Uh, nothing. I would note that, uh, you know, I did forward a letter to TSX some time ago and have not heard a thing back, so I'll shoot another letter to him here shortly just to try and get back the information to see if they've had the opportunity to appraise the smaller piece of property that the city wants to obtain for use of the trail.
Do you have a report on KSU and the parking?
With respect to, you all may recall that, uh, when the city sold the former Paul Saurier Library Building to KSU, the city also entered into a, into an agreement with, a separate agreement with KSU whereby it allowed KSU to, uh, use the 20 parking spaces that, uh, are on the street that, uh, that Rodney sent to proposing to be named as Riverboat Landing. That agreement renews automatically for another five-year term unless 60 days prior to its expiration, one of the parties, uh, indicates that it wishes to terminate the agreement. I spoke with Ms. Laurie Davis, general counsel for Kentucky State University, and of course, they'd like that agreement to remain for another, in place for another five years. I did call Ms. Davis today and left her message to return my call. I was just going to see if, uh, if perhaps Ms. Davis would agree to, uh, allow the public to use the 10 or 11 parking spaces that are in between, uh, the old library building and the new library building that are currently roped off.
No, it's not roped off anymore.
Oh, did they remove it today?
President Burris removed that, uh.
You mean the diagonal?
It's still closed.
Yep.
Are those ones like right beside the old building?
Right beside the old building. So I was just going to ask, you know, I don't, uh, just to see if they would agree to take the chain down.
Do you want to point to that on your map there?
Right there.
Oh.
That used to be there.
There's not, there's only like five or six there.
Well, there's 10 or 11 spaces.
That they would, are you saying that they would give up those?
Not given up permanently, but just let the public use them until KSU begins to use their building.
Cause actually that was brought up at a Kiwanis meeting when President Burris was speaking and that same day, the chain came down. And I parked there before, so somewhere between the last 30 days, I guess, I've not been back down there. Something, cause he's been out of town, so something, uh, that must have happened.
And the use of that would be for you lawyers going to the courthouse?
Well, uh, Mr. Sauer, I actually have a parking lot behind my building that we paid a rent. So anyway, I'll walk to it from.
Try to stay fit.
That's right. But anyway, it's my understanding that we don't want to, uh, to terminate our, our agreement with Kentucky State University and certainly, you know, KSU will benefit from having those parking spaces, uh, available for use once they begin using that property and then at the end of this next five-year term, uh, the city can reconsider.
Well, and I assume it's, doesn't preclude us from working with them during this five-year period of time if there's some way to collaboratively use those spaces. I realize they've got them, but they could because it's been my experience driving by there pretty frequently that it's fairly rare that anybody's in those parking spaces.
Uh, I would say the, the parking spaces that are closer to the river, you may be right. The ones on the side of the building.
Usually three or four cars are there.
I know that. They're used pretty frequently now.
These were the ones that were attractive to me and the reason why is we, if we do have more river traffic and so forth, I remember in the old days, people parking their trailers there and they're, um, anyway. Think about that.
Okay, I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. City clerk?
Yeah.
As many of you know, a number of years ago, we had an agreement with KSU. They used to raise fish in the effluent from our treatment plant. KSU has moved on to other plants that have larger facilities than what we have. However, Dr. Steve Mims, who was the person who instigated that, is no longer with KSU and he has sent us a proposal to use a small tank and when I say small, it's only, only 30,000 gallons. But, uh, Rob and I have both reviewed it and there's still a couple of things we've got to hammer out, but we'd like to add that on the agenda for your all's consideration on the 23rd if you have no objections.
So Mims is doing a proposal for himself privately?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Any objections? Okay, if not, we'll add that. Thank you.
HR?
I'd also like to request permission to add a couple personnel items to the agenda and a HealthSmart, a, uh, amended services agreement which should hold us in a slightly decreased cost position. Not much, but, um, additions to the agenda.
Well, okay, what, can you say that again?
Um, one is personnel action that didn't make this agenda because we're interviewing. And then with HealthSmart, we have a services agreement. We are in a three-year contract with them that will end at the end of this year, but every year our broker fees are adjusted and they're paid through that contract. So those broker fees have gone down slightly.
So we have a lot of savings tonight, right? We have $96,000 and something else.
It's more than $3,000.
So we can afford $3,000?
Let's not revisit that, Commissioner, please.
Well, I have an idea about that $3,000 that just came to me, but anyways.
Old business, new business is coming up.
Right.
Could be under oath.
Old business, new business.
Haven't been doing anything lately. Let me give you all some easy reading, so when the email comes out, you can't say that I didn't say anything about it. If you'll pass those around, please. This is, um, just a heads up, I got that this afternoon about 2:30 for the upcoming weather. Gary, we're down to 2603 now and it's, you ought to be good when you head home. I'm actually working on Michigan bottom line right now for a lady that's stuck in behind the weather. Other than that, um, if you want me to touch on emergency declaration, Mayor, it doesn't matter to me.
That's fine.
Um, talked to KYM today about the emergency declaration and my question was specifically, because we're running people and flood pumps still? Uh, I asked her, I said, if I rescind, if we rescind this emergency declaration today, something happens to the flood pump or something like that because of this weather, because of the time we've been doing it, can I go back and claim that? And she said, no, we still have to be under that declaration. So my advice to, was to the mayor and I spoke with the county judge would be to, wait till we get beyond the flood stuff, shut down the pumps, pull the personnel, make sure that we're not going to go back into that just because we can, if something happens to one of the pumps, it's a huge expense. We can recover that, we can recover the, uh, hours, overtime hours for the, for the personnel that are running those. And I still have, uh, Stony Creek, North Stony Creek, uh, evidently part of Flat Creek that people can't get across and then behind the library here is still closed with a tree across it and mud on the road. My, my advice to the mayor and the, and the county judge was to leave the emergency declaration open until we get past this event and then should we have to do it. Now, let me say, flooding events are a lot easier to get declarations, presidential declarations out of because generally there's more infrastructure damage, road damage on those and they take that. Whereas a snow event, it's just mostly manpower, time on the streets, things of that nature.
So, Tommy, the, um, we would, it would still have to be a federally declared, declared emergency for us to get our money if something happened to a pump?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, I just have the obvious fear, but I, and that is, it appears that the way we're going, that, that we're almost going to be weak. Since the flood season tends to be this time of year, we're, we're becoming, I'd almost, I'm a, my fear is that we're going to be in an emergency declaration almost on a permanent basis in the winter and the spring and I'm not very, I'm not comfortable with that.
You know, I kind of looked at the long-range forecast today and if you believe that, which, you know, it's up to you all whether you believe the long-range forecast, we can't get the short-range forecast right, but, you know, it's only a total of about five and a half inches of rain predicted now. Four of it, five of it, we're going to get this weekend, this coming weekend, this weekend. Now hopefully we'll just get one. It'll underachieve, we'll go down below flood stage and that'll be the end of it. You know, we're not going to get another snow event. We are, looks like the water might come up above 20 feet again. I expect it to go into the 20s, you know? But I've looked back through other flood declarations, Commissioner Roach, and they have been opened-ended, open-ended for quite a while. It doesn't cost us anything to do that and it gives us the obvious chance to recover should we go into a presidential declaration. It's obviously harder on Rebecca because she's tracking the hours or Glenn for everything and everything that we do, but I think it, I don't think it unwises at this time to go off of this one just because of that forecast that I just presented to you all.
Well, it's not my call of just.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I understand and that's, that's kind of.
And I'm afraid we're never going to get out of it.
Oh, we will. We will.
What are our chances that the president will declare it an emergency?
There's, there's a lot of flooding out there in the state right now, more so than what everybody realizes. I think the chances for presidential declaration on the flooding as opposed to the last snowstorm, which the state of Kentucky spent more than $16 million, uh, during the snowstorm, I think the presidential declaration is more likely for the flooding event than it is the snowstorm. That's now, that's my. event than it is the snowstorm. That's now, that's my personal opinion. You know, I looked out through there, there, and everybody says, you know, presidential declarations are harder to get now. You're supposed to, and all this stuff. I know Rebecca's been to the class. And I looked out through there, and there's still like 50 presidential declarations this year. And that's right along the average. I can't tell that they're any harder. Now, whether we get it or not, I don't know that. That is beyond me. But like I say, most of the time, flooding events are more infrastructure-related. And I sent Kentucky Transportation, I asked them to go look at Glenn's Creek out on, by Harrod Carter. The road was washed in three places out there that they'll have to look at, so.
Which pump stations are active right now?
Second Street and Jones Run, and they were trying to take Miro off this afternoon.
Second Street and Jones Run, yeah. I thought I'd seen a light at the end of the tunnel with your report earlier.
So did I.
When you said, you know, 20 on Wednesday, and even if Dick's Dam, you open the gates right now, nothing would come out.
Yeah. Yeah. And actually, that's probably our only saving grace right now, is the fact that the river's going to fall to 20. You know, three days sooner on this event, we're sitting at 30, and I get four inches of rain, and, you know, we're going to be into a whole different situation.
What is your prognostication that the flood emergency call will be changed?
Oh, I think, looking at this vent, I'm thinking it's an underachiever event. But then again, let me say, I was up at 3:00 in the morning when they changed us from 12 inches to 20 inches of snow. So I think we'll be through by, I have to apologize, my days are pretty much running together. The third week, maybe the third week of March, I think we'll be through with this. Like I say, I've looked out at the long-range forecast, and there's not as much rain.
Next week.
Huh?
Next week.
Yes. Yes. If we get down to 20 or 18 feet or something like that, I don't think there's enough moisture precipitation out there to get us back to 31 feet. Now, Mr. Bradley's got to keep his stuff online through 17, 18, through the 20s. But I'm not sure that we're going to get to a major flood issue for this, for this event. But if we can recover a dollar, we might as well try to recover a dollar.
I'm for recovering a dollar. I mean, can we look for 18 and say, that will probably be the end?
Yes. Well, it'll be, it'll be the end of the pump. 18 is the lowest stage where we put Second Street offline.
Exactly.
Whenever they get everything offline... But you can stay in emergency as long as you want, whether there's an emergency or not. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And again, that covers something that would happen during that period. And generally, flood periods are, I've looked back at some of the declarations, and they're, they're long periods.
Oh, yeah. We've left them open.
Long periods, you know.
But that's when there's a flood, right?
When the water's coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And the water's up now, and it's going back down. If we go below 18, 17, 16, and the National Weather Service tells me we're going to get two inches of rain, we're good. We'll go, we'll take them, we'll get rid of the declaration. And even if Tom's got to put a pump back on now, we're just going to 21 feet. We're not going to flood stage. We're not going to 31 feet.
We never got to 31 feet, though, did we?
No, sir.
Okay.
30 and a little bit, but...
Let me ask a technical question. You know, we've got some streets that are muddy now. In the old days, the fire department actually hosed them down, and then we sent the street sweeper by. What's the, what's the method of operation right now?
They're going by and looking at those streets if they need to clean up. And they'll go pick up the mud, and then...
They clean them up with the sweeper?
We, yes.
Okay. Fire Department no longer does that service for us?
Well, they might help us...
I could let that rain clear it off.
The rain will do the best good.
Won't cost us anything either.
And Tommy, I just wanted to know that your emails did not go unnoticed. I got snowed in in a different place. But I even saw even the mayor send something out at 3:00 something in the morning. I just happened to be up. Yeah, I see, saw yours. And I know if you're right here, you kind of know, you kind of know what's going on. I'm down there telling Tennessee people what's going on in Kentucky.
Right.
So it made me look smart. So I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Well, the reason I stayed up is because the flood levels kept coming up and coming up. The last time that I trusted National Weather Service, the flood levels kept coming up and coming up, and they were predicted to crest at like 39 feet. And it went right on by there. And Darren and I were sitting there looking at each other, thinking something's not right. And it went to like 42 and change, and we took a pretty good beat over that, even National Weather Service. And that was, they had a gauge messed up. But now there are safeguards in place so that won't happen again. I was making sure that, that this thing didn't go past where it was supposed to go, what I'd been putting out. You know, that's, that kind of makes you look bad, so loses credibility. But other than that, that's where we stand.
We'll pray for 18.
Yes, sir.
I like the little grass.
Did you say you had your hand up? I couldn't tell with the corner of my eye.
No, I already asked the question.
And this just moved one down.
Okay. Any other questions? I have, back on the agenda, 7.2, Penske Trail, Bondren. It had, in the financial analysis, Mr. Finance Director, it said 0000. Be caught, help me with that.
Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't see the request for that.
The design for the portion of the project is not to exceed 000.
That's a space filler until... We were supposed to meet on that last week to pick someone, and we got the foot on it.
Okay. All right. That's all from me. All right, any old business? Go ahead. No, are we going into a close session?
Old business.
Old business, new business. We don't have to.
Do we have new business?
Nobody has any.
I have a piece of, like, I think, business. I, like, had this question, I think, like, during the big snow event. I was wondering, do we have anything in place policy-wise for, like, shutting down to skeletal crew? Like, I'm not talking about you guys that are out there working 24/7 for two weeks. But like, here at City Hall, where we could, like, pare down and not require everybody to come in when, like, the county courthouse is closed and the university's closed. And do we have anything in place for that, like a plan? Like, we've got...
We do not close City Hall.
Okay.
Unless we don't have the staff. But we encourage all of our staff to take a look at the weather circumstances and make a decision on what's best for them as to whether or not they want to show up. Last Thursday, I think we had four individuals who showed up, so we answered the phones. And there was actually no walk-in traffic. But we encourage to make that, our employees, to make that decision on their own.
I think it's good that we remain open, but I would just hate to see us do what the state does, and that is make their employees take vacation time. I hope we don't do that. We don't do that, do we?
Yes, we do.
Well, yes, they would use their comp time or their vacation time. Yes. We don't close City Hall. So it's an individual decision as to whether or not they want to come to work. And if nobody would show up, then we would close City Hall. That's how we would handle it.
If nobody would show up, that we, see, I don't think City Hall should ever be closed.
I don't know.
I don't think it ever has.
But I don't think we should have necessarily... I'm talking about like when, you know, they're recommending that only emergency vehicles be out, and that travel be totally restricted. I'm thinking, could we not have a plan where we have people designated as skeletal staff that rotate so that we don't have people on the streets?
We ended up as skeletal staff.
I'm sorry, what?
We always had people here, and it actually played out that we did have skeletal staff. But where it's hard to make a plan is you don't necessarily do everyone's individual condition or situation. So those that were able to make it in did.
Commissioner, I think that the challenge there, if you remember, you remember the old saying prior to, prior to about 15 or 20 years ago, which was, if only essential people came into work at the state, well, there was a big uproar over that. And then the other aspect of it was, they weren't clearing the interstates quick enough. So commerce got upset, and then the taxpayers got upset because they wanted to know who was essential and who was nonessential. So I think it's a really good idea, but it'll end up being worse than what we're doing now.
I don't know that I'm putting a plan out there to be an idea. I'm just wondering, you know, how we operate it here.
Which works well right now, so they're going to monitor...
If it's working well right now, that's fine.
I think it works well.
Okay.
And if we have an emergency need, we have news to pick up people and bring them in. We'll go get them. We'll come to your house.
No, that was my only thing.
Is he about to say any old business?
Um... Do you?
I know it's a shock, but I have neither old or new business for the first time since I've been here.
You've got the floor, Commissioner.
I don't want the floor, but I think he's, he might be doing damage to your reputation. Might be doing damage to your reputation.
I think I got hit six times on money tonight, so I think I'm being pretty consistent.
Are you need, any new business?
Do we have...
Then we would, next, I would be to go into a close session for...
I'm going to go into a close session in accordance with KRS 61.810 for property. Yep, that one.
Move back, Commissioner Bowers. Second, I'm sorry, excuse me. Any discussions, CNN, quick, please, Coroll.
Mr. Haynes? Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Right here.
Mr. Flora?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bowers?
Here, yes.
Mayor May?
Yes.